Hustling. Hustling here, Thompson.
Here.
Thompson here, Carter.
Here.
Carter here, Henry. Henry absent, Slattery.
Here.
Slattery here, Poulos. Poulos absent, Johnson.
Here.
Johnson here, Frosto. Frosto absent, Bellato. Bellato's absent, we're here. Viera.
Here.
Viera here, Rita.
Here.
Rita here, Donahue.
Here.
Donahue here, Holly.
Here.
Holly here, Farrenwald.
Here.
Farrenwald here. Alderman Frosto just like. Alman present. And Bellato's locked in. Bellato present. Hustling.
Aye.
Hustling aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson aye, Carter.
Aye.
Carter aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye, Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald aye.
We're all welcome to tonight's meeting. We would like to remind you the purpose of the meetings for deliberation, city council, and mayor regarding state governance business. If you intend to speak, please once recognized by the board of the podium and have to make an address. Please be further advised, comments may be deleted to three minutes awarded to be included due personnel or individual person.
Thank you very much. Any comments? I'm going to need your name and address.
Good evening, everyone. Gia Ora, 12231 Fairway Circle. I'm rings of Blue Island, were president. I am here because I publicly addressed you three, four meetings ago, and I publicly invited Alderman Carr and Mayor Marcus and others to our first block party. I'm a fairer amongst the fairways, so all of Fairway Circle right off of the golf course. So since I publicly called you out and invited you, then I'll publicly thank you for attending. Thank you, Alderman Carr, thank you, Mayor Marcus. Serena, thank you for sending fire and police officers through. We've had a lot of different changes going on in the or on Fairway Circle, so if you drive through, you should see some differences with some of the work I've been having done, and some permits that will be filed for, for some roofing work and et cetera. But I did just want to put that public thank you out there, and hope that we will continue to have conversations about the street, and the conversations that I've had with Alderman Carr and Mayor Marcus regarding the street that's considered private but pays public taxes. Thank you and have a great day.
Thank you. Anyone else? Other comment? Nothing? Reported city officials, presentations, resolutions. Again, on a personal note, my family members from Mexico City, they arrived this morning in eleven, so they're here in Blue Island, not yet. So this is a family that lost a fifteen-year-old, so they're here alongside us. And again, you see us, say hi, say hello. They're fluent in English, so don't be ashamed, don't be shy. They're all fluent in English, so they all speak English very well. One's a linguist, the mother's a linguist, and the other one's a doctor, and then the little one's a linguist. So again, thank you before anybody comes across us. Set your course, business.
Yes, I need a motion to approve a request from Allen from Royal Little School District 130 to have their annual bicycle parade on Friday, October 6th, starting at nine AM.
A motion by Alderman Rita, second by Alderman Holly. Any questions? Hustling.
Aye.
Hustling aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson aye, Carter.
Epstein.
Carter Epstein, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye, Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald aye, Alman aye, and Luman's aye. Thank you very much.
Next, I need a motion to approve of Blue Island Tushles to have their annual homecoming parade on Saturday, October 7th, beginning at twelve noon from 123rd Street, Western and Hart Park.
Alderman Bellato, we have a second by Alderman Johnson. Do you second that one?
Yes.
Any questions?
What's the route, starting at the?
Chief, definitely chief part of the route. The rather members of 130 for eighty-three, familiar with that route.
Yes, they usually send it to me at a time, but it's down western avenue. I know it goes down western avenue, but it's not adjacent sites. If I remember correctly, it already says around Hart Park, downtown western avenue, and then it kind of extends by where they are.
Memorial Park.
Memorial Park. So we got a motion second.
Any questions? Roco, please. Hustling. Hustling aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson aye, Carter.
Aye.
Carter aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Johnson.
Epstein.
Johnson Epstein, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Donahue.
No.
Donahue no, Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye, Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald aye, and I don't know. One of them. All right, thank you very much. And also, sir? Thank you. Any bids? No bids. Uh, city treasurer, no report. You move on to city attorney? Okay, committee reports, committee development committee.
Uh, no report, Your Honor. Our next meeting is Thursday, October 5th at seven o'clock.
Thank you very much. Finance committee?
Uh, finance meeting called to order on September 19th at seven oh two. Members present, Alderman Holly, Farrenwald Thompson, Frosto, Alderman Austin, absent, Alderman Viera. Also present, Deputy Finance Director Lori Brown, Treasurer Bellato, Director John Rita, Special Project Mark Miller, Marisha Holmes from Cook County, and William Stolberg from 88 Midwest. Republic West Carol T D Screen and Kathy Searns. We have a payment dated September 8th, 2017, and the amount of three hundred fifty-five thousand, nine hundred and eighty-two dollars and fifty-eight cents. A motion to accept by Alderman Holly, second by Alderman Farrenwald. Motion carried. I'd like to make a motion to city council to accept.
We have a motion, second by Alderman Carter. Any questions? Hustling.
Aye.
Hustling aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson aye, Carter.
Aye.
Carter aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye, Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald aye, Bellato. Thank you.
Accounts payable for September 20th, 2017, in the amount of two hundred and eighty-four thousand, six hundred and fifty dollars and seventy-nine cents. A motion to accept by Alderman Farrenwald, second by Alderman Thompson. Motion carried. I make a motion to city council to accept.
Motion, second by Alderman Bellato. Any questions? Any questions? No? Roco, please. Hustling.
Aye.
Hustling aye, Thompson.
Aye.
Thompson aye, Carter.
Aye.
Carter aye, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Donahue.
Aye.
Donahue aye, Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye, Farrenwald.
Aye.
Under discussion of the committee, Alderman Farrenwald asked about the line service from the grant to cut grants at vacant property, and he also asked about the Illinois Department of Protection, what payment as long as it was a bond payment. Cook County Tax Incentive Presentation by Marsha Holmes gave the presentation to the committee on Class 6B Industrial, Seven Commercial, and Eight, area specific. This reduces assessment to businesses from twenty-five to ten percent. Approval must come from city council in the form of a resolution. Business must be in the area for ten years. Attorney Consultant Kane McKenna always makes a recommendation on all of our 6B applications. Alderman Farrenwald would like documented proof that giving 6B retains businesses. Cook County replied that it did. Alderman Thompson would like to see the same tax break for residential. A resolution approving the renewal of Class 6B taxing center for 13033 California. A roll call vote was taken to accept. Alderman Frosto yes, Alderman Austin yes, Alderman Thompson no, Alderman Holly yes, and Alderman Farrenwald yes. Motion carried. I make a motion to city council to accept.
Motion, second by Alderman Farrenwald. Any questions? Alderman, go ahead.
Um, this is a renewal.
Yes.
And the original one was 2006.
Yes.
According to what I read. So this is like giving them the same tax break all over again.
Well, this is on different parcels.
And it also, well, he got this, it says right here, renewal of Class B real estate tax incentive for that property. So they only got the tax breaks from 2006 forward once. Correct? I mean, that's the way I read it. And he's, he's only saying that he might give between one and three jobs additional on their property. I don't think we should do it.
Given the comments, also Alderman Carter, I share your skepticism, but I did vote for it. The city gets kind of traditionally so far in approving a lot of these, and the business owner demonstrated to us that they perceived a real benefit and need to keep the business here and make it grow and become more successful. I feel, in the minutes, I did ask, because I'm skeptical about these extensions myself, I asked the Cook County representative who's here if they could provide some proof that these brings to actually do what they're supposed to do, which is keep businesses in town. Didn't really get a solid answer. I voted for it, but I did think that I would continue to view this skeptically and like to see some more information developed about whether they really do what they're supposed to do. I personally couldn't vote with the conscious against it because I thought that the business made a good, a good presentation and they're responsible businesses in town, and we've been granting others, so that was my reason.
We also talked to him about making some additional improvements to landscaping and also possibly addressing the large fence on the property that's along Martin Road. He seemed very open to that. In fact, he emailed me and also, and also Alderman Frosto the next day, asking about more information and that he was willing to make some improvements. My problem with it generally is that we give these, I don't have a problem with the first ten years of the renewals of ones I usually have a problem with, but usually because they're not really willing to do any improvements. This guy seemed to be willing to do some improvements and use some of the funds that he both be getting to benefit the neighborhood or the area that he's occupied and asking for this tax break. So that's also, he seemed to be a little, a lot more open to doing some improvements than some of the other ones that we've done in the past. And also, they did make the, they, I mean, had been brought up that, you know, that if we don't give it to them, they'll move to also, because also we'll give it to them, whatever, you know, it's like, they can always threaten that. Making that a reality is something different. I was just happy to see that he was willing to make some improvements from our suggestions that are important.
Hustling.
Aye.
Hustling aye, Thompson.
No.
Thompson no. Carter.
No.
Carter no, Slattery.
Aye.
Slattery aye, Johnson.
Aye.
Johnson aye, Frosto.
Aye.
Frosto aye, Bellato.
Aye.
Bellato aye, Viera.
Aye.
Viera aye, Rita.
Aye.
Rita aye, Donahue.
No.
No. Holly.
Aye.
Holly aye. Farrenwald.
Aye.
Farrenwald aye.
No further business. The meeting was adjourned at eight oh five. Motion by Alderman Farrenwald, second by Alderman Holly. Motion carried. Next meeting is October 7th, 7:00 PM.
Yes, I can hear. Is it? Okay. Public Health and Safety Committee?
Oh, yes, Your Honor. We met on September 12th. President Work Director John Rita, Chief James Klinker, Deputy Chief Michael Cornell, Commander Patrick Sisk, Commander Jason Slattery, Alderman George Poulos, Alderman Kent Pittman, Alderman Donahue, Alderman Dexter Johnson, and myself. Also attending were Frederick Carmine Bellato, and residents Edward and Cynthia Warren. The meeting was called to order at six o'clock. Among the citizens, residents Edward and Cynthia Warren appeared to make an appeal about the ordinance requiring a sprinkler system in their property at 12705 Henri. The building is a poor plant and has experienced a fire. Chief Klinker reported that the extent of the damage made the restoration a reconstruction as opposed to a repair, and as such would require a sprinkler according to the city's fire code. A motion was made by Alderman Donahue to deny the appeal on the basis that Director Rita would work with the building department regarding permits. Second by Alderman Pittman. All in favor, motion carried. I'm going to skip over the statistics. You've got them in front of you. You can read them if you're interested, but there's a couple of things that are really interesting that have happened. On August the 17th, the Blue Island Fire Department was dispatched to a possible structure fire at 13030 Wood Street. Our firefighters, along with automatic aid companies from other communities responded. Lieutenant Olson and his crew arrived to find smoke coming from the third-floor apartment. They were advised that someone was possibly in the residence. They noticed a woman at the third-floor window, and it appeared to them that the woman was getting ready to jump from the window, while verbally assuring her that they were going to get her down. The other firefighters on the scene placed a ground ladder to the window to rescue the woman, while Lieutenant Olson and another firefighter stretched a line to the fire. While firefighters started fire suppression in the apartment, Lieutenant Olson made entry into the unit and assisted in getting the woman onto a ladder that had been set up. Firefighter Pinnick assisted her down into our ambulance where she was medically evaluated. The fire was dangerously close to spreading to the open attic space, which would have then spread across the entire structure. The fire department worked with the Red Cross to get housing floor and the other two residents. Our fire investigator Lieutenant Coons was called to the scene where they worked to determine the cause of the fire. That investigation is ongoing. This crew, including their engineer firefighter Reed, acted quickly under the precision and the perpontance of their duties and saved the woman's life. Their actions are something the entire city should be proud of. Under place department, four new squad cars are being fitted for patrol, and all four vehicles are expected to be on the road by the end of the month. Under calls of interest, on August 28th, Corporal Septesee and Officer Wright were on aggressive patrol near the Fulton Street parking lot. Corporal Septesee observed a vehicle parked in the lot with two occupants inside at approximately 10:00 PM. While checking out the vehicle and the occupants, they observed the odor of burning cannabis. While speaking with the occupants, Corporal Septesee observed a handgun under the front seat. The driver of the vehicle admitted to possessing the gun. The gun turned out to be a stolen handgun from Pennsylvania. The driver was charged with aggravated unlawful use of a weapon. Deputy Chief Cornell made the following statement. He said, "I highlight officers that often make great arrests and often overlook those who are some of the greatest assets to the police department. Rachel LaSalle King is one of the most dedicated officers I have ever had the pleasure of knowing. He is the first to volunteer his time and effort to make the city of Blue Island a better place. Officers like LaSalle have often become overlooked because it is expected of them to go above and beyond. I want to publicly recognize him and his dedication to the Blue Island Police Department. It's police officers like him that make Blue Island a better place." Under miscellaneous, the Blue Island Police Department will begin sex offender checks for Halloween on October 1st. Under the 911 Center, the projected go-live date for Cook County dispatch is between November 1st and November 13th. Director Rita mentioned that all our dispatchers have been extremely cooperative and positive about the upcoming transition, and he expresses appreciation to them. Under monthly health and sanitation report, in the month of August, 25 health and sanitation inspections were done. All the businesses inspected were within state and local guidelines. There was a motion to adjourn by Alderman Donahue, second by Alderman Poulos. The meeting was adjourned at 6:45. Our next meeting will be October the 10th at 6:00 PM from East Anex.
Thank you very much. Municipal Services Committee?
Uh, no report. Our next meeting will be October 24th at 10:00 PM in East Anex.
Thank you very much. Judiciary Committee?
Our meeting was called to order Monday, September 11th at 6:05 PM. Those were Alderman Farrenwald, Alderman Pittman, and Alderman Poulos, also Director Rita, and Assistant General Counsel Andrea Truco, and citizen named Housley was present. There's public comment. Mr. Housley requested that the city consider lowering the number of fire trash containers for apartment buildings, and the matter was referred to Municipal Services Committee. I won't go through the various managers who brought up for a vote because they were brought up at the last meeting and dealt with that at the city council that time. There were no Alderman concerns expressed. Motion to adjourn by Alderman Pittman, second by Poulos, will carry and adjourn at 6:40 PM. The next meeting of the Judiciary Committee will be Monday, October 16th at 6:00 PM.
Any automatic announcements or comments?
Yes, Mayor, I want to comment about this water rate situation. We just need to be flat honest with ourselves. Ever since this water building system that we put in, water building system that we put in, we've been having bigger trouble with people being overbuild, properties not accessed, things of that nature. Myself was built. Some of us just came forward, especially with this water rate increase. A lot of people saying that you implemented, which in fact, it came, it was mentioned in the financials, that certain parties or people in our council wanted this water rate increase and put it up under you as though you voted on it. People need to be honest. We took an oath in front of God to do the best that we can. None of us are perfect. We all make mistakes. We got Robinson Engineering, another company we paying out of pocket, or the citizens are paying out of pocket. They're looking at something where we need to start from the very beginning and down there. It's not fair to none of the citizens that we continue to make mistakes and take the dollars out of their pockets. We need to be truthful and stop going poke and dagger, smoke and mirrors. If you made a mistake, man up and say you made a mistake. That's it. We're only human. And stop lying and putting things on other people. That's what I got to say.
Alderman Johnson?
Can you identify any aldermen that has any authority to put anything on each other? It wasn't the alderman, it was your dad.
My father.
Your father. Who is the treasurer? Did he come to, did he come to the financial meeting and mention anything about a water increase?
You asking me?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, he did. Yes, absolutely.
The mayor came to the same meeting and said he was for it.
No, wait. The mayor did not, did not. Wait, are you asking if he brought it up at that meeting? Was he the one that brought it to the meeting?
No, ma'am.
What are you asking?
I'm asking you, was it mentioned, mentioned by him about a water increase? Wanting the water increase?
Well, we had the CPA consultant there telling us about the water rate increase.
Okay, but until we had those issues, until we brought the water department and public works together, we didn't have those issues. Matter of fact, they had a surplus of $2 million.
I want to get back to the fact that you mentioned the city treasurer wanting this at a finance committee when that never happened.
They just mentioned and said they did.
It was under me. He did.
He was at the meeting, yes, but as I say, the CPA consultant is the one that brought it to the meeting, not the treasurer.
Who, who's they? You have the chairman right there saying that he never wants, said he wanted a water increase. Who's they?
Alderman Austin.
Sure he did. Sure he did.
Anybody else in the finance committee that can verify which side it was?
Yes, he pursued it. Yes, he did.
I gotta say, I was there, and I don't quite perceive a crime in the city treasurer bringing to the finance committee the need for more revenue, along with a qualified consultant who provided a very good and dispassionate analysis of the situation. We're going to, yeah, this will be presented to us, I guess, tomorrow.
Yes.
And I hope sincerely that everyone will listen with an open mind to what is said, and then make your decision about whether this is good or not. I wouldn't prejudge this, and I did not, in that way, perceive that anyone was doing anything other than just bringing important information to the committee for consideration that was fully considered over several weeks. And I feel very good about what we have. Right?
Well, we should have had a heated argument.
Well, we did, I know.
Well, well, that, aren't we?
I, absolutely.
They sure did. Toe to toe, we went.
You did, you did indeed.
Yes, absolutely.
No question about that.
That was my corral.
No, it was, absolutely, and I appreciate that you presented your position very strongly.
Good. And I appreciate what you have to say, but I have a voice there too.
Absolutely.
Absolutely. And we sure did get it on in there, in that evening.
Yeah, obviously, I said finance committee, and, you know, I got heated, you know, seeing the year of increases. You don't smile about that, you know, you're getting hit left and right with the state, the county. But it was our CPA that came forth and identified this meeting and brought this to our attention. You know, it was, you know, the administrative office, they have their meetings, you know, they're, they're, they're freaking out about what's going on, and then if it's, you know, this information's supposed to get sent on to us, my question is, have all the departments had prior to coming to finance met as a whole? Because, you know, we were under pressure where we got kind of surprised that all of a sudden, you know, there's, there's a need for an increase. That was, that's my concern apart, as far as how this was rolled out too, with lack of public hearing, lack of, all of council members being informed, and it just come straight up from the general again.
And so just to remind everybody, we're just going to be here tomorrow. A lot of this is probably going to be brought up again, so that's why we're just going to tomorrow. Go ahead. Alderman, go ahead.
I do feel like the other aldermen who are not on the finance committee should have been given an opportunity, to view the facts and figures that the CPA firm brought up. It's like, we still haven't seen it.
I agree.
We, well, as aldermen who are expecting to vote on these things, we should have
some kind of knowledge. The only reason that there's going to be a public meeting is because the people outside the audience here have demanded it.
I got a question for Alderman Johnson. Were you at the finance committee? If you were not at the finance committee, why are you playing the telephone game and we do as children and that intelligent that you can't hear for your own, you're gonna play the telephone game on one Alderman and draw him in that's not a meeting, under the bus? When everybody here is saying it's the CPA brought it up and the treasurer's only doing the job, I come to a finance meeting that he has to come to because he's an elected official, just like we have to come to city council meetings and discuss things that sometimes we don't want to discuss, it makes us feel bad. And we're still elected to come to those meetings. Understand? But this was brought to me and I'm not going anybody under the bus. Take you a hit like a man like you should. It's simple as that.
You have three Aldermen at this meeting, you said it's not what we said. Three Aldermen said it's not what we said, you are not at this meeting, I think it's very immature for bringing something up to a meeting.
At the finance committee meeting, it was discussed that we wanted to have an open meeting, a meeting of the whole and also a public hearing. It was brought to us from the finance department to the finance committee, which is correct. And it was also, I'm sure, they had a meeting with Treasurer Valado ahead of time, as they should have, and so he was more fully versed than the rest of us at the beginning of the meeting. And so he was helping to explain the reasoning behind the, backing up what the CPA was telling us. So, we did push that all the Aldermen get a full packet of what we got before it ever came to a vote, and that did not happen when it was put on the agenda. And so, what's happening then tomorrow night is going to be, is I think, the correct thing to happen and that's really what the whole committee wanted anyway. And so I believe that tomorrow night, everyone will be able to see what the finance committee saw, I hope, and at least that's what we're told, so we'll see what happens tomorrow. But, I mean, Treasurer Valado was in favor of doing something. He said, "The financial situation is difficult and we need to do something," and so he was supporting the CPA, but he was not necessarily, he's not the one that brought it to the finance department, the CPA brought the information to the meeting.
Thank you, your honor. Madam Chairman, Houseley, did the mayor come to any of the finance meetings and speak in any way towards, did he speak in favor of the increase? Did he, what did he say? Did he speak in favor of it? Did he say, "This is terrible, this is the greatest ever"?
Isn't he sitting right there? How about we stop the hearsay and talk to the man himself?
I can tell you what I said, that I was against it, and if it had to be done, it had to be done in increments, given everything that's been happening in the city. Again, as the mayor, you want to do the best for your citizens because they demand and request the best from streets to sewers and everything, but again, I kept mentioning when we got introduced with the presentation of the contents, that things were gonna be tough. They had said initially X percentage, fifteen, eighteen, twenty-four, and then it went up to thirty. And I personally said, "You know what? That it would be a mistake to go up that high." Basically, and I said politically, "And it would be a mistake to go that high." If they were gonna do it, that was gonna be something that the council wouldn't consider, it better be gradual. So I did attempt on me. Go ahead.
With all due respect, Mayor, I was sat at that meeting, other finance members sat at this meeting, I do not hear you, remember you saying that you wanted, that your opinion was for a graduate increase.
Thank you for being honest.
It is, that's what it is. You came to the first meeting and you said, you spoke about the position that the city is in the financials.
Correct.
And obviously, we all want to see road improvements and there's different paths to get there faster than the pace that construction is going on right now. You know, this city is an entire state that lacked improvement and sufficient upkeep of our roads and alleys for years and now we're paying the price and when we spoke at the, when we were at that finance meeting, you did not say that.
That's what you're saying, okay.
You know, I'm, go ahead.
Go ahead, Alderman Thompson.
Go ahead. I'm gonna say I stand on what I said. I said, I did vote for it in the finance committee meeting and I said, in the last city council meeting, I did not agree on it and I still don't agree on it and I have been consistent all the way through. So, anybody who'd like to deny that I have said that, stand and say that. I stand on what I said.
Thank you. Alderman Thompson? Yes, I would just like to say that this water rate increase was handled wrong from the beginning.
Absolutely.
The mayor should have met with the director, the treasurer, and the city clerk. They should have, and the CPA consultant. They should have discussed it, they should have reviewed it, and they should have brought a recommendation to the finance committee. Instead, finance committee received the whole brunt of it and that's when I said, "We, wait a minute, we need a meeting of the whole, we can't make that decision for the city." So I requested a meeting of the whole, that never happened. I also...
Who'd you request it to?
From the committee, the whole committee that was there.
The representative requested? Did you request it to me?
No. Well, you got lost. You got lost.
That's right, the city stayed to the whole meeting.
I also requested that every Alderman be given the same information that we got from the CPA, that never happened. I just think this was handled wrong. I'm glad we're having the meeting of the whole and the city has to do something, we're in dire straits and once, I hope, everyone here is the CPA consultant, they'll be able to make a good decision on this.
Alderman, not to go around and around too much, but Alderman Thompson, I respect and appreciate your position. You've held it very steadily and very clearly throughout, and I acknowledge that, absolutely. And for our chairman, I agree that the process hasn't been handled particularly well and I know all of us, and I particularly spoke pretty much in every meeting that we had, that it would be very important that everyone be informed fully about this so that we can make a good decision. Okay, so some things haven't gone that well to this point. We are having a very important meeting tomorrow night, it's the meeting that should happen. It will provide the information you all need. I'd rather that this issue not get clouded and he says, she said, and who doesn't like who or whatever. This is important for the city. Listen to it about what do you want to have happen to your city and what do you think is important and what can we afford and listen to what our consultant has to say and then maybe just, don't make it now, you don't have a choice to make a decision, wait.
Thank you very much.
Mayor, have we found out about the twelve, eighteen, twenty-four percent rate? Where's it going? I'm gonna, we losing it, have it been found? They saying we losing between twelve to twenty-four percent, okay, twelve to twenty-four percent in this, with this rate. Have we found where the leakage is at? Where the problem or the issue is at? If we tax our citizens at, let's say, thirty percent and we haven't found the problem, where do we go from there? Because then the taxation does not meet the standards of how we losing whatever percentage this is, because they said twelve, between twelve and twenty-four.
I just like to suggest, I think that this is all gonna be answered and I probably have to answer those questions right now, you're gonna people's...
You know what? It is true.
You know, we actually have this, it's not a taxation, it's a water rate increase. I mean...
This, again, all these issues that you brought up.
Yeah, right.
Any other comments? If not, I know, you know, Alderman Thompson?
Oh, she has.
Have you gotten any word about the grocery store that George turns?
Yes, she has, enough.
Yes, I complied with the request made by the mayor. That letter was provided to Mr. Nervous the Friday following next to the council meeting after working with the Director Rita and Andy Tupo, we get the language together, we did not have a proposed letter, we put something together and it met with his request and we also, Director Rita has been working with Urs Licky, who was on vacation that week and was gone for a week, and he and Director Rita are coordinating getting information from Mr. Nervous because there are some figures that need to be updated and Mr. Licky had concerns in his professional opinion about the information that was provided and how stale some of the information was in the passing of time. So, Mr. Nervous and Mr. Licky were connected directly and they're working to resolve the substantive issue with respect to the development agreement, but it will still have to go through committee and process.
After the last city council meeting, I specifically asked that I would be kept apprised of what was happening and...
I just got the...
There's nothing, other than him getting the letter that he requested, there is nothing happening until he sits down with Mr. Licky and they hash out the issues that Mr. Licky has raised as he consulted for the city. So there's, there's a, there's no substance that has happened because they have to sit down and work out the details.
On a different subject, can I address the city of... If the mayor meets with three Aldermen, and thus three Aldermen, is that a violation of the Open Meetings Act?
It has to be a majority of a form, so if your form is eight, the majority would be five.
So he couldn't, he couldn't meet with three of us and not violate the Open Meetings Act?
All right. Thank you very much.
Mayor, last week, uh, thank you, Mayor, so last week, I sent, I don't know, eight emails from all our Aldermen, some multi-mails, I don't believe you responded to any of them. Are you too important to respond to our emails?
I didn't respond to them.
Why? I'm wondering why, they were, there was not one response to any of the emails we sent.
I just didn't respond to them.
So, reason? So, we're not, we can't convey information to the people who are not responding because you won't respond? So that's disrespectful, it's...
Did you respond to them?
Okay, and then, so, yesterday, three of us Aldermen came to speak to you and you refused to speak to us on the grounds that it was a violation of the Open Meetings Act.
I'm not the special listener, you heard it from her.
Sir?
She wasn't there yesterday.
With all due respect, you're the mayor and you're a lawyer.
Not with that, I'm not gonna do the risk of committing a violation, so that's why I decided to be safe. And if it needs to be done free and she says it's okay, fine, she has her legal counsel, she's advising me that I can. But yesterday, when you all, they showed up, I wasn't the one who was doing it.
I believe that you're trying to avoid us and avoid our questions.
Let's go, you can mic with me tonight if you want. Go ahead.
Why, why receive information since you didn't answer the emails? Why didn't you send the information about the public hearing to the Alderman before sending it to the public first?
I seem to explain that, we had, there was a town hall meeting on the Wednesday after city council and that question was brought up by a resident as to what proposed dates were allowed. In fact, we had already submitted dates and your Alderman had already mentioned certain dates that the twenty-seventh would be preferable. So when a resident asked, "Is there gonna be a public meeting?", I said, "You know what, there's three dates out there, but more likely not, probably ninety-five percent of the time it's gonna be on the twenty-seventh," because that's the information that I got from the Alderman. So on Thursday morning is that when we got in contact with Lori, Salgado said, "You know what, if you do me a favor, I need you to post this, prepare the agenda for that and post it, okay?" My assistant went on vacation from Thursday on until the following Wednesday. So then I get information, I get information that they hadn't gone through or you guys hadn't been informed, so that's why Monday morning, I emailed all of you saying, "The date is the date that you wanted, the twenty-seventh, at the time at seven o'clock and it's going ahead." So again, given social media, somebody posted it from the audience, I had town hall meeting before you backed that up.
So, Wednesday, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you know, six days and you couldn't send one note saying, "Hey, guys, hey, Aldermen, Alder people, this is what..."
I didn't see it, I was out of town.
But you already knew about, you already knew, you said you picked the date.
Yeah, and that's why I told Lori to post it.
Mayor Salvo's on vacation, did you say?
She left on Thursday, Thursday to Wednesday, because it was her birthday weekend. Okay. Go ahead.
The dinner party you're hosting this Thursday?
Nothing, she seems not being charged, we were just...
Can I finish my question? When were you made aware of the dinner party?
Probably two months ago.
Okay, sorry, are citizens invited since it's the city of Wyoming and so to it?
I think it's South River Mayor's, basically, all married.
South River Mayor's.
City Council Mayor.
Since you're hosting a citizen of Wyoming just can't come? You're hosting a cocktail party?
I might have to be, it's some dollars for you, you're running low on the dough.
Well, why are we doing that? We're trying, you're trying to raise our water and you're hosting a dinner party.
I'm not being charged.
Well, yes, they're not being charged, so we have to pay for it. You're hosting a dinner party, you're asking Mr. Ray...
I didn't raise other everything.
You're hosting a dinner party, you're asking to raise your water.
My ticket is free, I'm not paying anything.
So, the city's paying for it. We're getting a bill, I know we're getting a bill. We've paid these bills before.
I'm not this one.
You're asking us to vote on a water increase while you're hosting a dinner party, that's real nice, thank you, thank you, Mayor. Thank you for being fiscally responsible with our money, thank you.
Bye. Anybody else? Motion to go and say that... Motion. Alderman Thompson, seconded by Alderman, I will, you will both, any questions?